I'd like to call the Bellefonte Borough Council Business Meeting to Order. First item is, uh, call the meeting to order and pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and this is a republic which stands one nation under our umbrella, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next is roll call, please.
Mr. Bernier?
Here.
Mr. Brackville?
Here.
Ms. Clayton?
Here.
Ms. Dan?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Ms. McKean?
Here.
Ms. Purnell?
Here.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Here.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
Here.
Mr. Larson is not here at the moment. Mayor Johnson?
Here.
Thank you. Next item is additions to the council meeting agenda. Do I have any additions to Bellefonte Borough Council agenda? Hearing none. We'll move on to a special presentation tonight. We have with us Mr. Steve Nunez, President of the Pennsylvania Highlands Community College. I'd like to give us an introduction and speak a little bit on that. Thank you, sir.
Hey, good evening. Thanks, uh, thanks so much for giving me the opportunity to be here tonight. Uh, I'm gonna give, be very brief, but I wanna do a quick history. Uh, my father was a founding member of Southwest Virginia Community College in nineteen seventy, and he instilled in me several values, one certainly being about education and the importance of education, and another, plus many more, was the importance of community colleges in, uh, in rural areas. And so, uh, I lived through him in many ways, and so, uh, he loved that community college. I went to that community college and graduated from there with my associate's degree, and professionally, the only thing that I've ever known are community colleges. It's the only thing I've ever done. And so, for almost thirty years, I've worked in the community college business. And the reason that I've worked in the community college business, of course, started with my father, uh, is because of our mission. And our mission is really simple, is to provide affordable and accessible quality education to the communities that we serve. And all of those things are important, and they all have to go together, right? So affordable, you understand, accessible, we do that in a number of ways at the college. Uh, we provide face-to-face instruction, of course, but we also have several online offerings, so there's, there's that part. Uh, the quality piece, we are accredited by the same organization as Penn State, so our quality piece is there. And, uh, we are in the communities that we serve. Our people live here, our students come from our communities, and they often stay local and work local, uh, raise families, pay taxes, they stay here. And so, um, you know, education, and I bet you would agree with this, education is, is really one of the best ways to improve someone's life. And I think we provide that opportunity here in Center County. So we are a comprehensive community college. We do many things, uh, probably take too long to go through them, uh, but we certainly provide an opportunity for folks to come to us and transfer to a four-year university like Penn State and earn a bachelor's degree. About half of our students start with us and then transfer to earn that bachelor's degree. The other half are in our workforce programs, so they come to us, they, uh, earn a degree or a certificate and enter the workforce right away. Uh, and then, a couple more pieces, we offer dual enrollment. Uh, we are one of the largest offer, we offer almost as much dual enrollment as some of the larger community, uh, larger universities in the state. We have fifteen hundred dual enrollment students. These are students that are in high school, taking college-level classes, uh, with like fifty-two different school districts across the state. So, again, we are an accredited organization with our dual enrollment program as well. And then the piece that's sort of sometimes forgotten, but shouldn't be, is our non-credit workforce development side, where we train incumbent workers, right, that are already, already doing the job, but need some upskilling, right? So we do all of those things as a comprehensive community college, and we think that it is a win-win-win for this community. A win for the college, a win for Bellef- Bellefonte and, uh, and Center County, uh, and of course, most importantly, a win for the students and the residents of this county. We are extremely proud to be here, and we are in Bellefonte because you wanted us to be in Bellefonte. And so, you have been very gracious, uh, with welcoming us to our, to this community. We now have a fabulous facility right down at the match factory, and, uh, we have a ribbon cutting on August sixteenth at ten thirty. We would love for you to come and celebrate with us as we launch that new facility, and it'll be a small facility that we hope to grow bigger and bigger and bigger as we reach more of the residents of this county. So again, I thank you so very much for your time, uh, and thank you for being so hospitable to, to me as a person and to the college, uh, for certain, and, and I would be, uh, remiss to not thank Ralph Stewart for everything that he's done. He's been, uh, a friend and a mentor to this, for me and this community, and he's gonna help us, uh, grow and be even better here.
Steve?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, you have a proclamation?
I sure do.
Okay.
A proclamation, whereas for nearly thirty years, the Pennsylvania Highlands Community College has been a premier institution of higher education and a driving force in regional economic growth, positioning students to be recognized as highly competent and exceptional members of the community and workforce. And whereas the Pennsylvania Highlands Community College offers an inclusive, supportive, and affordable environment that empowers students to obtain the knowledge and skills necessary to be successful in work, life, and the pursuit of lifelong learning. And whereas the Pennsylvania Highlands Community College has now expanded to Center County with a newly renovated classroom space at the match factory here in Bellefonte. And whereas the Pennsylvania Highlands Community College is planning a ribbon-cutting ceremony for ten thirty a.m. on Friday, August sixteenth, at the match factory, and invites all who can attend. And now, therefore, the mayor of Bellefonte, the mayor of Borough of Bellefonte, Center County, on behalf of the Borough Council and the residents of Bellefonte, hereby welcomes Pennsylvania Highlands Community College to Center County and Bellefonte. I do hereby set my hand and seal this fifth day of August two thousand twenty-four.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Next is public comment section. I have a resolution, and I'll ask for a motion in a second to approve the resolution, number zero eight zero five two zero two four dash zero one, that was in your packets.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Dan?
I'll second it, Clayton.
Comment, discussion. Yes, Deborah.
Um, I feel that given the size of our community, where we have all been elected to serve on this council by our friends and neighbors, to ask our friends and neighbors to now prove their worth by showing identification in order to express themselves in front of this body is kind of embarrassing. I understand, in a way, trying to focus our attention on municipal issues and what it takes to keep this municipality running, but to ask for identification is a little, little bit above and beyond what is necessary.
Ralph, I think that came from several other examples. Is that how you came up with that?
Uh, yes, we, we borrowed from other resolutions. It's a, you know, it's a, uh, one is commonly used, and we just ask you to vote accordingly, but it's something that we, uh, put together.
Okay. I personally cannot support this resolution if it includes the requirement of proving identification. I understand wanting to have residents make comments about what's going on in the borough, but not if they have to show ID. That's a little bit too much.
Okay. Other comments, discussion?
Yes, um, during the time I've been on council, there's been no discussion regarding the need for a resolution for any public speakers. The fact that this is occurring now, following our last meeting where public speakers spoke of our creating a resolution to call for a ceasefire for both Israel and Gaza, sounds discriminatory. Also, I have noticed that on our agenda for this evening, that there is no mention of the speakers who attended that meeting, nor an item writing a resolution to support their cause, nor discussing as a council whether we support such a resolution. It's like it never happened, except for the fact that we have this res, we're facing this resolution where people are going to be ID'd and very limited in what they can say, and that's just nonsensical. I do have a ceasefire resolution that I would like added to the agenda for our next meeting on the first Monday, Monday in September.
Other comments?
I really don't understand the aversion to showing ID. I mean, we have to show ID for lots of other things that we do in our life. I don't understand why it's such a big deal for this. Um, I don't know. I, I don't see anything wrong with the resolution at all.
If your next-door neighbor comes to speak, make public comment here, are you seriously going to ask your next-door neighbor to show ID? This is a small community. When something happens, we all gather together and help our friends and neighbors. This is not Manhattan.
Yes, but do we know every single resident in the community? I understand what you're saying about your neighbor, but...
More than you think, more than you think. And it is our friends and neighbors who have elected us to serve on this council.
Yeah. Well, I don't recognize a lot of these people in here, even though I'm an official, so I, I wouldn't be able to say for sure whether they are residents or not, just by looking at them.
Joanne, do you have a comment?
Yeah. Our current policy for public comment has been to allow any Bellefonte resident, business owner, or employee, as well as any representative of a nonprofit that impacts Bellefonte Borough's functioning or economy, to speak. Instituting this resolution will degrade communication between the borough and the public. If passed, these new instructions, these restrictions will limit comment to residents and taxpayers only. The resolution will eliminate information and concerns that we should be hearing about from stakeholders not meeting the resolution's criteria. Specifically, these restrictions will eliminate employees of businesses within the borough who don't live here, as these people pay the earned income tax and property taxes where they live, not work. Nonprofit and county government leaders and their employees who don't pay taxes here and aren't residents of Belle, are disenfranchised from speaking under this resolution. For example, neither the directors of HBI or DBI live in Bellefonte and would be prohibited from talking during public comment portions of the meeting according to this guideline. Similarly, people concerned about things happening in the borough that impact their lives but don't meet these criteria wouldn't be allowed to speak. For example, we had a resident complain of that their house cleaner, cleaner had parking issues while working at their home. Some residents can't make our meetings due to other obligation. Shouldn't non-residents be able to have their issue addressed by advocating for themselves, even if their employer is not able to address council? In addition, business owners who rent property for their businesses but are not residents would also be disenfranchised, as they do not pay taxes on their businesses here to the borough. I think we can all agree that these different groups of people could positively impact Bellefonte. However, if the president of a council recognizes some people who don't meet this resolution's criteria and then prevents other non-qualified people from speaking, an unjust situation will have been created. According to the open records law in the U.S. Supreme Court, the government must apply any rule even-handedly. I believe that this timing of this resolution is also a suspect. Several people in the room this evening want to speak out and are here to talk to us. You have rearranged the agenda so that if this resolution passes, anyone who does not have a form of identification, as Deb said, or who can't prove that they are a taxpayer is immediately cut off from any comment. On its face, this looks like an attempt, to me, to quash speech. This timing also attempts to suppress any comment you may not want to hear this evening or in the future. In addition, this resolution doesn't address the issue of public comment for items not on the agenda, as Shawna said. This resolution never mentions if public comment on items not on the agenda will be allowed after tonight. Finally, why are we voting on this tonight? In the past, members of council have complained that some items on their agenda are being rushed through without a chance to hear from constituents. What problem is this resolution resolving? Why now? Is this an emergency? And if so, what is the emergency? I'd like to be, I think there's some people in the public who would also like to comment. Now, if there's, the council members have finished.
Any other discussion from council members or comment about the resolution? That's on the agenda. We got, we gotta vote on it, and then we can move on. Hearing none.
No, we can, I believe, point of order, there are people here in the public, who, this is a public comment session, and I believe that they, who wanted to speak on this particular topic, should be able to come up and speak.
I think it's after we're done with the resolution.
No, that is against the sunshine law. You have to allow them to speak before you vote on, uh, a motion that, that they're concerned about.
Is there other comments or discussion? If not, we're gonna go to a vote.
I see hands.
From council. Before we move into public comment, are there other comments?
You have to, no. I am going to continue because you, under the sunshine act...
We understand your passion for this. We're gonna vote and see how the council, um...
No, you have to listen to the public. This is what happened in two thousand and thirteen, when we had the, uh, Garman Opera House, and it ended up being, uh, had to be resolved, because there were people in the public who were not allowed to speak. And the lawyer said that we needed to do it, and we needed to hold it.
We haven't made that decision yet.
You can't...
So you're assuming that's gonna be the decision.
I, it doesn't matter.
Unless you did, you're assuming.
No. What I'm saying...
We haven't made the decision yet.
No. You can't vote on a motion until you hear from the public. If there's anybody here in the public that wants to speak.
That's never happened before. Never, not in my three years here. The public comment?
Not in three years. In, not, two thousand and thirteen is what I'm talking about. You weren't on council then.
We're gonna move forward with the vote. Go ahead, Mr. Olderman. Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Brackville?
Don't interrupt the meeting, or you're gonna be removed. Last warning, okay? Last warning. Roll call vote.
Mr. Brackville?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
No.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
No.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
No.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
No!
We, we talked about that, Joanne. Remember, try to be professional. We know you're passionate about it, but you could be professional.
I am professional about it, and this is showing my passion. And if you look at the Supreme Court decision, it says you can't show your passion, and that's exactly what I'm doing.
Five to four, the resolution passes. Anybody? Well, the resolution just passed. If you're a Bellefonte resident, and you'd like to speak, speak about an item on the agenda, go ahead. On the agenda. So point out the item, the item on the agenda.
Excuse me, I'm going, yeah, excuse me, I'm gonna call up the people who signed in and completed the form.
I thought, yeah.
No, I'm, I'm gonna call the who's going to speak.
I'm on there, but why didn't we get to do that?
I'm gonna call, I'm gonna call the order.
After the, okay.
And the people who showed the ID and signed in correctly, uh, the first person... I'm gonna call the speakers who wants to speak on items on the agenda.
Point of order, please.
There was no item on the agenda. Go ahead, Mr. S.
The first, excuse me, you're interrupting. The first person is Tony White of nine nineteen...
Hello, my name is Tony White. I'm a Bellefonte resident. So, people came and said, there's a genocide happening, and people are dying.
This is an item on the agenda.
And people are dying, and your response?
This is an item on the agenda.
Oh, it's on the agenda!
Where's it on the agenda?
You just voted on it, before I got to talk.
That is, there's nothing on the agenda about genocide.
You're not even letting me talk! How do you know what I'm gonna say?
You said something about genocide.
That's right! Last...
Which item on the agenda do you want to speak about?
The vote that you just had!
That's a different resolution.
That's a resolution. Which item on the agenda do you want to speak about?
I don't know the number, it was the vote that you just had, that was on the agenda, right?
That was for a different resolution, sir.
The vote that you just had on whether, on limiting speech.
That has nothing to do with genocide.
Yes. My time is running, and they're not letting me talk, or listening to what I'm saying.
Out, you're out of order. Your next speaker?
No, that's, that's, I'm not getting, I'm not moving from here. No. So, your response to hearing that people are dying was to say, to limit people's ability to talk about that. Um, so somebody comes, a, a neighbor comes to you, there's an emergency, there's an emergency, and your response is, you're talking too much. You're, you're repeating yourself.
Point of order, we are out of line with this.
People are, um, in your community are concerned enough about something to come and speak about it.
Sir, you are, you are out of order, sir.
Why? I'm talking about the item on the agenda that I signed up for. How is that out of order?
There is nothing on the agenda, no action items, about a resolution involving genocide.
Yeah, right, it was about limiting the speech about, about it, right? That's what you just voted on? That didn't happen?
Sir, you're out of order.
I'm not out of order, you are out of order by putting the vote before the public comments. That's out of order.
According to who?
The...
Just where did you get that?
Can I, can't have a, I can't have a...
Where did you get that fact from?
That, that you, you vote on something before you hear the public comments on it.
Sir, at the end of the meeting, there's a non-agenda public comment period.
But that's not what I'm talking about, I'm talking about the agenda item of, of limiting speech. So, so there's people, you know that if a certain amount of speakers come, there's...
Sir.
It generally represents a larger amount that haven't got it, that haven't, uh...
Mr. President? Can we call recess in the other room, please?
That's executive session?
Executive session.
We're gonna go back to the back for executive session. Do you have to vote on that?
You can call, you can call.
If ten people speak up about something, that represents a certain amount more, who are concerned about it. And so your response, when you see, oh, too many people are concerned about this, as representatives, um, you would think it would be, let's do something about, you know, if there's, if there's, there's people dying, and maybe there's, and the residents are saying, there's something you could do about it.
We're trying to serve the residents of Bellefonte.
Your response is to tell them not to talk.
Go ahead.
I, okay.
What item are you speaking about? Just tell us.
I'm speaking about the, I'm speaking...
We went over that already, that's incorrect.
Yes, I am speaking about the vote that you had to limit speech. That was on the agenda, the vote that you had to limit speech. And I'm saying that it's not a proper response when you're representatives of the people that when you see that they are... that when you see that they are very concerned about something more than usual, that instead of thinking, oh, this is something to consider, it's something that we have to shut them up about. That's very poor representation, so.
You have, you're going to be escorted out of the meeting if you don't stop, okay? You're disrupting our meeting. I know that's.
If, I have five seconds left, so I would say that.
What's your point?
It was, it's amazing that when people are concerned about people dying and speaking up about it, that your response is to stop them from speaking instead of considering it and taking the action that's possible.
Yes, that's a good. Thank you, Mr. White.
That, unfortunately, Mr. White is the only one that completed the questionnaire with and showed ID for items. I, I have initials here for the items on the agenda. For the item, listen, for the items on the agenda. That, that's not what we have here. It says, please show ID, and I only have one initial. I, I'm sorry, we sign, we had a sign-up sheet. We had a sign-up sheet.
I believe since this is the first time this has happened and people are not understanding what's going on.
Joanne, that's the first time I've gotten 94 emails sent to my email address, too. So something has to be done. No, it's not. My job, thank you, is, our job is to serve the residents of Bellefonte about the, about the agenda. I know you guys don't want to listen, you just want to shout, but about the items that are on the agenda. So if you want to speak on an item on the agenda, come up to the, come up and tell us which one you're speaking about. Go ahead, sir. Which item on the agenda are you speaking about?
I'm here to speak about item six.
Ma'am, please, ma'am, please announce your name and your address.
My name is Julia Kazdorff. My address, you don't need my address. I'm in the North Ward. I've lived in the North Ward for, since 2006, and then I lived in the West Ward since 2000. I'd like to speak about resolution 08052024-01, which you just voted to approve. I can understand why council members who may not agree with ceasefire resolution might feel aggravated or frustrated by the testimonials you listened to last week. I spoke last week. But I worry that this resolution is short-sighted. And I wonder if you are preventing yourselves from getting expert advice by leaders or others, friends, who don't live in the borough, but who could bring to you ideas or concerns. And the first person who came to my mind when I read this resolution was Sue Hannigan, who doesn't live in Bellefonte Borough, who spent many years of her working career working on preservation and historical research in this town, who was responsible for the preservation of the match factory. I know that's not what you want. I know you don't want to require your neighbors to show their driver's license to speak. So I, and I feel like now I'm speaking too late because the vote already passed. But maybe Barbara's suggestion to go into another room and have a conversation is a good idea, to give this some second thought. Thank you.
Just to be clear, there's a Stacey Hall that signed in and says they're a Bellefonte resident but has a Valley View address. That is not a Bellefonte Borough address. I'm going to skip over that name. There's a John Holt, it looks like Pine Circle. And if there's a John Holt, come up, thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Holst. I'm a resident of Bellefonte's South Ward. I'm here to speak on resolution 08052024-01. As far as I can tell, the change to the public comment period is a solution in search of a problem. In other words, this is an effort to restrict who can speak and what they can say based on one meeting in which it would appear some council members do not like what they heard. Having to listen to things you don't want to hear is not a problem to be solved. It is democracy in action. This council should be a democratic forum. The public comment period is and should remain a time when residents and representatives from organizations bring topics of concern to the attention of the borough, whether they are on the agenda or not. Moreover, this proposed change does not, doesn't just restrict who can speak, but what they want to say. The clause about repetitive comments really does not permit the council to gauge public interest. If many people are for or against something, that could be deemed repetitive and public comment could be shut down. We don't stop counting votes after we see a number of votes cast for one candidate. We count all the votes, because everyone's vote should count, just like everyone's voice should be heard. I hope that the council realizes that this proposal restricts everyone's speech, whether you like or don't like the issue for which they are advocating. It seems to me that the public comment period should be run, should be an open forum where the council can be informed of issues of interest to the public, as the name itself implies. What happens or does not happen in Bellefonte impacts people beyond the borough and vice versa. We should be open to hearing from residents and those representatives, and those representing organizations who believe they have comments of importance for the well-being of the borough. Thank you.
We're moving on, sir. Our next section is communications.
I was not interrupted? That didn't happen? It's on camera.
That's right. Next section, we're moving on in the meeting, okay? Thank you.
I didn't get my three minutes.
Please, sir, have a seat.
It's not fair.
Communications, the first one is Center County Recycling and Refuge Authority. We have business to move on to. I'm sorry, folks. Center County Recycling, Refuge and Authority, July 2024. No council action is needed. Second is the Climate Action Plan Webinar. It's scheduled for August 8th, 2024. Anybody interested? It's August 8th. It's the Climate Action Plan Webinar. Next is the Bellefonte EMS Municipal Joint Meeting, July 30th, 2024. Finally, the last item under communication was the PSAB Fall Leadership Conference. It's October 11th through the 13th, 2024. We sent in some representatives to that, Ralph. So no council action needed on those items. Next is the Consent Agenda. I need, all the, all the listed items on the consent agenda are considered routine. I need a motion in a second to accept the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion, Dan.
Thank you, Barbara.
I'd like to remove the minutes.
Discussion?
I'd like to remove the minutes.
We tried to resolve this, it didn't work, huh?
Yes.
Didn't we resolve this, Joanne, so we didn't have to do this? We can't hear you, but. We just can't hear you, so if you want us to be able to hear you.
Oh, I forgot to put on the microphone. Sorry about that. I just want to change one word because I believe it's incorrect. And it's on page four, and change charity to family in the third sentence of that, on the first item under new business. And that's it.
Any other questions or discussion? Can we just change that administrative?
Yes, we'll take care of that.
All right.
Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Brackbill?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
Yes, thank you.
Next is reports, and first on the list is Mayor Buddy Johnson.
Thank you. For my report tonight, I just wanted to spotlight all the volunteers and everybody who worked hard to make Bellefonte such a great community with all the events over the summer, from the music in the park to the Bellefonte Cruise and the recent Arts and Crafts Fair, the Children's Fair. I know a lot of people put a lot of time and effort into that, and there's a lot of volunteers needed. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, everybody knows how thankful our community is for these special events.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Larson's not here, right? Mrs. Thompson's report was submitted. She's asking, we're asking for a motion in a second to approve the Harv project as presented with the modifications to the Harley Horizontal Plank as opposed to the T-111 siding and window to match the style and material to the carriage house.
So moved. Second, Dan.
Discussions or comments on that? Those in your pictures and stuff are in your packet.
Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Brackbill?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
Yes.
The next scheduled Harv meeting, for those that would like to attend, is Tuesday, August 13th, at 8:30 a.m. And the next scheduled Planning Commission meeting is Monday, August 12th, at 5 p.m. Next is current and old business. First item is art along the walkway in Tallyram Park. We received a legal opinion about that, Ralph. Can you comment on that?
Yes, we have a note here on the agenda. Solicitor is saying basically, you, we don't have regulations that speak to placing art exhibits on the walkway, on the bridge, Veterans Bridge, or in Tallyram Park. You know, if council wants to allow this in the future, the recommendation is to develop the policies first, and then you'll have the guidelines necessary. But first, it's something for council to consider, whether it's something you want to do or not.
So I'll make that motion to request staff and the Planning Commission to develop a draft policy for the placement of art in these, these areas with a review by our solicitor before it comes back to the council.
I just, I would think most of us would be in agreement that.
You need a second.
Do we have that motion a second? Can we just let the Planning Commission?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion? Are we all in favor of letting Planning Commission and staff develop a policy?
Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Brackbill?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
Yes.
Thank you. As a reminder, there will be no meeting on August 19th. The reports for that meeting will be included in the September 3rd meeting materials. The next item is the Police Department's renovation, the timeline. Mr. Stewart, do you want to comment on that?
Basically, myself and Chief Whitmer have been meeting with architect Mike Leakey on this project. It's going well. They're just finishing up the mechanical, the electrical, and the plumbing pieces of the project. He's hoping to finish those plans. There's a bidding process that we're required to go through and then pick, once, once the bidder's lined up, the contractor, that'll start this fall. The estimated completion of the project is around January, maybe into February. You know, so that is because of the processes we have to go through. But that's what they're looking at. We're happy to show the plans. If you want to stop by Chief Whitmer's office, we're happy to show you those plans.
I just want to say thank you very much for the update on that, and things are moving along, and it's very well needed and deserved for our police department. So thank you all very much.
Okay, next is Barton and Log Guidance, Guidance was awarded the Suspension Bridge Project. Next is the Spring Street, Streetscape Preconstruction Meeting was held on July 31st. Work is scheduled to begin August 19th. That's like the third or last phase of that, is that right, Tom?
Yes.
So that's almost complete.
Don, could you tell the public what's happening in this second phase?
August 19th.
The second phase of the Streetscape project will be on West Bishop Street in front of the Waffle Shop, up through Smokers Express to finish up that corner, and then it'll go across the street and from Dollar General down to High Street. So it'll be the same type of project that we had on the opposite side of the street. Should last, be completed by sometime mid-November.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is the Big Spring Cover Project. Potential wellheads in the Tallyram Park expanded area. As mentioned at our July 15th council meeting, the Bellefonte Borough Authority is expecting to receive an update on the Big Spring Cover Project at their regular meeting, which is tomorrow night, correct? Tuesday? Go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
Could I have a, make a comment? I've heard from several people, and seeing the list that the agenda was distributed to, I might suggest moving that from the small conference room to this room for tomorrow's meeting.
Okay, we can do that. We'll just post on the door, the room change, so we'll use this room. That's no problem.
Ralph, I understand that there's already a meeting scheduled in this room tomorrow night, because there were supposed to be three meetings here, and we had to move a third one elsewhere. So you may have a conflict, just FYI.
Do you know offhand what time that? At what time?
Same time.
Okay. Okay, yes, yes, we can trade rooms.
All right, we have an authority vacancy. The Bellefonte Borough Authority is recommending to council that Dan Delotta be appointed to the authority to fill the remainder of the vacancy term. I need a motion in a second.
I'll make that motion, Dan.
Second, Johnson.
Discussion or comments? Hearing none?
Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Brackbill?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
Yes.
Next is new business. Looks like we're wrapping up the Parkview Heights Stormwater Management Project with a payment to John Klar Escavating, payment number six in the amount of $13,074.75. Need a motion in a second to any.
A second, Dan.
Discussion?
Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Brackbill?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
Yes.
So it's completed and paid for?
Yes.
How long had that project been in the works, roughly?
Took years to get the funding, but the project itself was about six months.
Excellent. We have a letter from Sunnyside Paddling Park organizers requesting permitted assistance. This is a regional facility. Council may consider an up or down vote. They're here to speak, too. Okay.
I'm moved to have the borough process this permit application for the kayaking wires and slalom poles across Spring Creek to send to DEP and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers without cost or liability to the borough. And Mach 1 will complete the application and submit it to the borough and submit it to the borough for us to submit it on their behalf.
Is there somebody here from... Do you want to speak on the topic for us to help us better understand it?
Mr. Kurtz.
I know who that is, Mr. Kurtz. How are you, sir?
I'm doing pretty well.
All right. Make sure your microphone's on there.
Is it on, is not on?
I don't...
Is it okay?
Yeah, I think so. I think so.
So, looking for any questions on the project?
Yeah, could you just elaborate just briefly for the public what it is and what you're asking the council to do?
I'm sorry, I can't, I can't quite hear you.
Yeah, that's okay. You, just speak briefly about your organization and what it's about, and what you're asking borough council to vote on.
Okay. We have a slalom course that was created in 1965, and the course is, consists of a number of slalom gates hung from wires stretched over the water, but none of the gates, generally speaking, are in contact with the water, according to slalom rules of international competition. And the process is that one can learn how to paddle by paddling in this course with the idea that you would go through the gates in an obstacle course pattern without touching the poles. Now, the poles are about four feet apart or so, and you're to move your boat with, as you get along and skills, and you're moving your boat as fast as you can move it through the water, either upstream or downstream, without touching the poles, going through these gates in this obstacle course. So it's clear that it's a really good way of developing paddling skill in whitewater paddling.
Mr. Kurtz?
Now, just the other day...
Mr. Kurtz, I want to interrupt you, just to ask you, I think we understand that part of it. What is it that you're asking to be permitted, and have you had issues in other waterways with these wires and...
We need, we need to get permission. We can...
Can I?
Yeah, let, Ms....
Yeah, what is it that you're asking permission for?
So, we all know the course has been there for a long time, and it's, you know, it's a treasure. But it came to DEP's attention, the Department of Environmental Protection's attention some years ago, that the course wasn't permitted. It's not permitted because it's so old, that the law's changed, and it just never, the two things just never matched. When it came to DEP's attention, they got in touch with Dave, and they said, "You need a permit," because Spring Creek is high quality, it's exceptional water. The permit has to be the Army Corps of Engineers and DEP. It's called a joint permit, those two people are joint, and it's a small project. So, the permit is just to make what we have legal. It's not to change it, it's just to make it so that it complies with the regulations. The downside of this process is that if Mach One puts in the application, it'll cost between one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars and two thousand dollars. But if the borough puts in the application, it's free. The reason for that being that most of the course is within the boundary of the borough. And that's just the way it works.
Okay. All right, so that's the juxtaposition. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Folks, we appreciate your time. All right. Thanks for the explanation.
You still need a second.
Further questions or discussion from council?
Just a quick one. I read the letter. I heard the statement from Joanne in her motion. I don't, just, so, do we need our solicitor to look at this? I don't want the borough any liability for us filling the application out. That's, that's my only, it's been conveyed to me that we have no liability in our discussion tonight. Do we, as a council, feel comfortable with that? Maybe Ralph can tell me more.
Well, you know, we could have the solicitor look at the letter, but I'm perfectly happy to write a letter in response to whatever council approves or doesn't approve. But if you do approve it, you know, we'll put in there just what the motion is, that there's no liability to the borough, and, because that's how the motion was stated.
And it would still have to be approved by DEP, correct?
Yes.
So they're the governing agency, once we submit it, if I understand it correctly. Are they not able to do the paddling right now? Is it completely shut down while you wait for this permit, so there's been nobody able to do this course? Is that correct? Is this a time sensitive?
No, no, it's...
They've been able to do it?
Yeah.
Okay.
The, so DEP's position, well, in our discussions with DEP...
Yeah.
Their position is that frequently, an entity like the borough can apply for something like this on behalf of other people. That happens all the time.
Yeah.
But because Mach One is going through in good faith to get the permit, it hasn't been shut down. The facility's not shut down. It just needs to get a permit.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments before we vote? Go ahead, Mr. Oldman. Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Brackbill?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Oldman. Next is the public comment regarding issues that are not on the agenda. Okay. Do it again.
Yep.
I'm asking to relax the new rules of Resolution 08052024 to allow all to speak on items not listed on the agenda. I need a second.
Second, Sedgwick.
Further discussion or questions? Vote?
I have one question. Is this just for this evening, or?
Right now.
But not for the future?
We'll have to work on that one.
Okay.
Mr. Bernier?
No.
Mr. Brackbill?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
No.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to call the folks in order listed on the non-agenda items, and forgive me if I don't pronounce the name correctly, looks like Tamir Sorik of Christopher Lane, and of course, I'm going to abide by the motion that was just approved. So if you want to come up, you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Tamir Sorik. I'm not a resident of Belfont, thank you for hosting me here. I'm a professor at Penn State University. My expertise is in the Israeli and Palestinian history and society, and I'm here to talk about and for ceasefire resolution. Yesterday, the Minister of Finance of Israel, Itzhak L. Smotrich, said publicly that it is moral to starve to death two million people in Gaza. The only reason not to do it is international public opinion. And this is not a marginal person in Israeli politics. He is gaining the votes of, his party is the largest among Israeli soldiers. The government is dependent on him, because if he's out of the government, the Prime Minister will go to jail. So he, this is a person with a lot of influence of what's going on in Gaza, and basically, what is happening on the ground in Gaza is the starving to death of millions of people. And this is done with our money, because I am an American citizen, you are an American citizen. So we have a moral responsibility to stop it, not only because we are responsible for what's happening there, but because if we want, nothing will happen from inside Israel. Israel needs now international pressure to stop it, to stop the killing of millions of people. Yes, we don't have the power to do it, but we can raise our voice, we can put pressure on the administration, and we can tell to our children and to our grandchildren that in the moment of truth, we did the right thing. We raised our voice. We tried to stop. And this is for the moral aspect. Beyond that, there is the instrumental totalitarian aspect. If we won't stop now, a regional war will erupt, and not only Palestinians will die, but everyone in the region is in risk. And we have here people from Lebanon, me, I'm Israeli, we are all concerned about the life of our families, of our friends, and we're asking you to help, to save the people in Gaza, to save the children in Gaza, but also to save the people in the region. Raise your voice, be able to tell to your children and to grandchildren that in the moment of truth, when millions of people were in danger to die, you stood, you raised your voice, and you contributed to the effort to stop this carnage. Thank you very much.
And the next person is Claudia Wilson. Please come up, you have three minutes.
Hi. My name is Claudia Wilson. I have been a resident and taxpayer of Belfont for over thirty-eight years. I'm also a member of the State College Friends Meeting and clerk of the Upper Susquehanna Quarter of the Philadelphia yearly meeting. A foundational belief of Quakers is that of peace, working towards peace and the continual ways to achieve it. In that work is the call to speak truth to power, as is now needed in the conflict between the Palestinians and Israelis. I ask the borough council to consider and approve a Gaza ceasefire resolution, which apparently has not been submitted yet. An excerpt from the Friends Committee on National Legislation Action Item says, "Since the escalation began, the Israeli government has restricted food, fuel, and humanitarian assistance to the Gaza Strip. The U.N. is warning of a looming famine if urgent action is not taken. More than a million people have been internally displaced due to the fighting. There is currently no safe place in Gaza. As the bombardment and blockade persists, the humanitarian toll continues to mount. You may ask what a request for a ceasefire resolution in Gaza has to do with us." Everything. Our taxes and government are funding the transfer of weapons and military assistance. Our children may be drawn into military actions in the future. International humanitarian law is being ignored while women and children die of famine and displacement, because innocent people are dying. This resolution, or a resolution that you may consider, may only be one small voice, one speck of light in the darkness of the world enmeshed in war. But one voice becomes two, two becomes twenty, twenty becomes twenty thousand, and the small voice becomes a siren call to our government to take action. Why us? Why not us?"
Next person is Ale Hall, Alley View. You'll have three, three minutes.
Hi. My name's Ale, and I'm eleven years old, and I've lived in Belfont my entire life. Over the past ten months, I've watched the news and heard my parents speak about the war in Gaza. I think that it is extremely inhumane to starve men, women, and children. It's wrong to deprive humans of food, potable water, and health care. I also believe that everyone deserves an education. Every child in Gaza missed a year of school. Israel targets schools and hospitals, which means people in Gaza don't get medical care or their education. Israel also murders doctors trying to get into Gaza to save people. Please show me my community cares by passing a ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
Please, I would like to continue here. We would like to continue, please. Mendissa, and I'm not sure the last name, Hereloff, or it's 127 South Aldeghini Street?
I'm exposing my whole address. Hi. My name is Mandy Saharoff, and I'm a South African who lives in Belfont. In nineteen forty-eight, both South Africa and Palestine suffered the formalization of apartheid. In the words of South African writer Sol Blaki, "The people of these lands became pariahs in the home of their birth." For both countries, this has meant the native citizens are rendered criminals by the settler state and suffer routine pushouts massacres and constant policing. This year, South Africa honors thirty years since the formal end of apartheid. This reality would not be possible were it not for a global movement calling for the end of apartheid and the oppression of black people in the land of their birth. It is heartbreaking that rather than celebrate this gain of global solidarity for South Africa, I am witnessing the escalating gruesome acts of genocide against the Palestinian people. The horror of October 7th, when a dozen Israeli civilians were murdered by Hamas and others taken as hostages, tore across the world, as has the daily deaths of Palestinians by the Israeli army, which have up to date amounted to over forty thousand people since October 7th. The task is clear. Another move of global solidarity is necessary. This is not an Israel-Hamas war. It is a long overdue call for all of us to stand up and refuse to be witnesses to genocide, dispossession, and any form of oppression. As a resident of Belfont, it gives me courage to know that this city does indeed have a history of standing up for those who suffer violence elsewhere, and has served as a refuge for black people running from slavery in the South. And there's a mural outside Waffle House that just got revealed now over the weekend. Celebrating such successes while turning a blind eye to what is happening in Palestine feels very disconnected to me. I hope that the Belfont I live in is one that will answer the call to join many cities and counties and countries asking for an immediate ceasefire. I hope that Belfont will refuse to stand by idly as a genocide is performed in front of our eyes and in our lifetime. I hope that the Belfont I live in today continues to hold the values that made it safe for Frederick Douglass to get his hair cut in this city over a hundred years ago. I hope that the Belfont I live in today is one that thirty years from now, a Palestinian will look to with gratitude as part of the global movement that brought an end to nearly a century of brutality. We cannot allow this terror to come to a year in our watch. It's ten months now, coming up on eleven, and then a year. We cannot let this be our reality. Thank you.
Julia Kasdorff, thanks.
First of all, I want to thank Mr. Brackbill and Ms. Sedgwick and all of you for passing the motion so that we could hear all these voices. So, Julia Kasdorff is my name. I've lived in the North Ward since 2006, and prior to that, for four years in the West Ward. I was among the citizens who spoke last month in support of Belfont Borough, joining the other Pennsylvania municipalities that have adopted a ceasefire resolution. This past week, as pressures have mounted in the Middle East, and the United States has sent more ships and fighter planes, and an additional forty-five hundred Marines to the region, my concern has only deepened for the people of Gaza and surrounding areas. You have heard others speak eloquently about the destruction of schools and universities, the suffering, displacement, and deaths of civilians. The greatest costs of this war will be the lives lost in the Middle East, of course. But let's look at our town. I live near the newer section of Union Cemetery, and sipping my coffee most mornings, I see the flags above tombstones across from my porch. Belfont has sent so many to serve in our nation's wars. As a poetry professor, I have come to know and appreciate a number of reservists and veterans in the classroom, and I have also observed how the harms of war can come home in the bodies and minds of soldiers who survive. So yes, I believe that a ceasefire resolution... So yes, I believe that a ceasefire resolution is a matter of local concern. I also respect those who think this is not council business, who urge us to contact Glenn Thompson and other national officials. I agree, and I have done so. On Sunday mornings, Deacon Alex DiQ, also in the North Ward, prays for the people of Gaza from the pulpit at St. John's Episcopal Church just across the playground here. To pursue every avenue of hope, I turn to you now to request that you adopt a ceasefire resolution for this town and for the sake of peace in our world.
Hi, nice to see you again. I'm Stacy Hall. And as I mentioned last month, I was born at Center Community Hospital, and I have been a homeowner in Belfont for 11 years. I am sixth generation to Belfont. My grandma grew up an axeman, and her mom, and her mom, and her mom. And now my kids are seventh generation. I love Belfont. I care about it, and I believe it does represent lots of the values that I believe in. I have lost many hours of sleep since we met last trying to figure out how to persuade you to even consider this issue or think about it or educate yourself about it and investigate what we have to present. And honestly, I'm left with just so many questions. Last month, I testified to the war crimes that I have witnessed against children, those that are not covered in mainstream media. And as a response, some of you went home, and instead of investigating my claims, you came back and tried to squelch my voice. I asked myself, should I even share with you what I've seen in the last month? Does it even touch your heart in the least? But I'm going to, and it takes courage. Courage comes from the root word core, heart. My children are here, and I do not shelter them from the world because they are the future peacemakers of the world. What you are about to hear is not easy to hear. Over the last month, I have seen children shot multiple times by the best snipers in the world, Israeli snipers, targeted in their chest and head. I have seen another child's head. It was placed from a bucket into a body bag. Mr. Stewart, I teach my children that we listen with our eyes and ears. I would love to make some eye contact with you. I've seen a young boy who is dangling from the one arm of a man carrying him. His brains were spilling out of his head. The other arm was carrying a living child fleeing from the sight of an explosion. I've seen a headless child carried through the streets by the father and mother on the way to the hospital to be counted. I've seen a six-year-old whose head was split in two and again, brain matter falling out. I've seen a young girl whose body was being excavated from the rubble, gravelly concrete encasing her body. I've seen the lifeless body of a child hanging from the remains of a school bombed just a few days ago. Four schools bombed in 24 hours. This is the tip of the iceberg of what I've seen. I will skip a lot, but I would like to just tell you why there aren't more people here. I have made a choice to take a very hard path. I have made a choice to witness a genocide. This choice has been a sacrifice of my happiness over the past 10 months. My family can attest I am a changed person, but I must do it because I am committed to truth. That's my courage, and I ask you which path you will take.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. We have to move on.
The courageous path is always harder.
We have to move on.
John Holt. John Holt. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Holst. I am a resident of the Borough's South Ward. I come to you once again to request that you join over 175 towns across the U.S. and the state of Hawaii and pass a resolution calling for an immediate ceasefire in Gaza. This is a borough issue because borough resident tax dollars are paying for Israel's war on Palestine at the tune of 3.5 billion per year. I want to repeat that genocide is defined in the Genocide Convention ratified by the U.S. and Israel as committing acts with the quote, "intent to destroy in whole or in part a national ethnic, racial, or religious group." What does the genocide against the Palestinian people in Gaza look like? Let's consider Israel's bombings of schools since we last met the week of July 14th. July 14th, Israel bombs a school in a refugee camp, killing at least 22 Palestinians. July 17th, Israel bombs a schooling, killing at least 42 Palestinians. July 19th, Israel bombs a school in Gaza City. July 27th, Israel bombs a school, killing at least 30 Palestinians and injuring over 100. August 1, Israel bombs a school, killing 15 Palestinians. August 3, Israel bombs a school in Gaza City, killing 16 Palestinians. August 4, Israel bombs a school in Gaza City, killing at least 30 Palestinians. Of the dead and wounded, 80% were children. This is a mere snapshot of three weeks of an ongoing genocide and of the 10,000 students killed by Israel in Gaza. This genocide costs a lot of money. U.S. tax dollars that leave our borough, county, state, and nation. We here in Belfont know how precious our tax dollars are. How long did we deliberate over renovating or building our new school? The availability of tax dollars was a major issue. I live close enough to hear and feel the blasting at our new school's construction site. When I hear and feel the blasting, I can't help think that here in Belfont, our tax dollars pay for explosives to build a school, while at the same time, we give our tax dollars to Israel to blow up schools and kill civilians. Just since July 14th, our U.S. and Belfont tax dollars have destroyed seven schools, killing over 155 Palestinians. Israel spends on average 2.5 million per day of mostly our tax dollars on bombs. This is 55 million since we last met, or in Belfont terms, the cost of our new school. Belfonters know how hard it is to fund the construction of schools. So we have a moral and a financial obligation to say no, not with our tax dollars.
Thank you, sir. We have to move on.
Money to build schools or to destroy them. We need to make a choice. We need to pass a ceasefire resolution now.
The handwriting is hard to read. It looks like Mohaven Almesba, 215 West Fairmount Avenue.
Hello. So it's been like 10 months of a genocide. This past Thursday marked the 300th day of the genocide that's going on in Gaza. More than 40,000 people have already been killed. More than 80,000 have been injured. And I came today to ask you all to move a motion, calling for a ceasefire. But seeing what just happened today, it's honestly just shameful and ridiculous. 10 months of a genocide, 10 months of daily killings, 10 months of bombing and deliberate starving, 10 months of raping, 10 months of checking off every international war crime that they can do. And yet, we are still here debating on whether we should speak up on it or whether even we should be discussing it. And it's really funny seeing how you would turn on every single thing that you represent, seeing you turn on the community members, seeing you turn on the people that voted you in, seeing you turn on morals, human rights, freedom, and democracy, just so that you can stay silent while a genocide is happening.
Jonathan Eburn, it looks like. Again, sorry if I mispronounced that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. My name is Jonathan Eburn. Thank you, Ralph. You said it right. I have been a Belfont resident for 20 years, 22 years, just about. I live on Lynn Street. Ralph Stewart is my neighbor on one side across the street. Don Holderman is a neighbor a couple of doors down on the other side of the street. Don, by the way, I'm getting my other hip done. I'm a parent. My child was born here, grew up here, 18 years. They're going to college this month. So I think of all the stories that have been told, and you know, it hits me. I'm not going to rehearse those figures. I'm not going to rehearse those numbers. I'm going to say something very simple and brief, because I'm still kind of sweating from running back to get my ID. One of the reasons that I love Belfont and one of the reasons that we continue to live here is neighbors. We have them. We are neighbors. We are neighborly. My next door neighbor, the two of them, they're former service members. They're with the Marines. My cross-street neighbors, Penn State grads. Neighbors over here, we're professors at Ohio State. Very different political beliefs. Doesn't matter. We're neighbors. We take care of each other. I support the call for a ceasefire, and I'm grateful to the borough for putting this on the next agenda. And I urge the Borough Council to pass a ceasefire resolution. This is not a controversial topic. It doesn't require taking sides. It's not about judging or condemning whatever you may feel. What a ceasefire enables is protecting civilians to enable humanitarian access so that medical aid, food, can be brought in without those people getting killed. And it involves the ability to bury and mourn the dead. That's it. A ceasefire resolution is also quite straightforward. It sends a message, along with all the other places that are saying the same thing, to the U.S. government, Democrats as well as Republicans, to advocate for the ceasefire, for the reasons I just explained. This is a popular thing, not in the government, but in general. Recent polling shows, and this is nonpartisan polling, 67%, that's two-thirds of all U.S. voters across parties, support the U.S. call for a ceasefire. 60% of Israeli citizens also support a ceasefire. So I just wanted to say that, keep it at that. This is not, you know, a huge intervention, but it makes a difference, and it does a way of doing the right thing, as we've said. Again, I ask you then, as a parent, as a neighbor, to really consider this fully. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, folks. That concludes the people that signed up in our public comment regarding the issues not on the agenda. The next minute is adjournment. I'll call for a motion in a second for an adjournment.
I'll make that motion, Dan.
Second.
Thank you. Belfont Borough Council meeting is adjourned. Thank you.